I should offer down here part of this uh.
We have heat lights here so it's really bright.
Okay, the um we have probably nineteen dollar bill right now, over nineteen thousand dollars.
Is what we have in the in the fund?
Yeah.
Okay.
The price price for the fencing exterior only is ten thousand ten thousand three hundred and fifty two dollars.
Okay.
The one bit I've got for all the paint and the rest of this flies is eighty six hundred and seventy six dollars. Now between those two, there's your nineteen thousand dollars right there.
Right. Now that's not even net.
We still have we still haven't got any fencing going down the middle if we want to end up with regular fencing down the middle that's another thirty one hundred dollars.
Wow.
So and if you want to get it painted by somebody else, I had a guy tell me he painted for like seventy five hundred dollars and included all materials but I in a little area of something like I did all follow up on him and get some references.
Okay.
But like I said, we've always all the money that they've got right now is accounted for in the chew and we still haven't got center fencing um and yeah center fencing.
Okay.
Landscaping gonna fall under beautification maybe, no?
We don't have to do it our way.
Okay.
Okay, well thank you Mike.
One thing that would you know if the weather conditions are right right now then consider before you have to start mowing and all that is getting rid of that excess dirt that's all there.
Don't you want that spread out someplace or do you want it gone?
It can be spread to some degree there, I mean you know we'll take a common sense approach over there and see what fits over there.
Yeah, cause Timson do it.
Yeah, if if it doesn't fit over there um then we haul it away but I think you could probably put some around all the edges to kind of on top of the rock that they kind of slanted and then like so that's something you have to decide on site, I can't see it from here at all. One way or another it'd be nice to get that out of the way before it was before we get into the thick of the summer season when people are too busy.
Okay. Alrighty. Thank you Mike. Go ahead.
Being it's a round table, I just want to mention one thing I'd like to see and that's a radar sign for our town. A portable we could put our I I know there's grants out there, I just don't have any idea where to go look for them.
You want the portable machine or the radar ones that are sold or?
They make one that's run off of battery you can put on a on a eight foot fence post. So you could have it at this end for a day or two and then you can put it at that end for a day or two, you can move it into the side streets around the post office main or down that street there so I mean I don't know how many will go to Colville but I that gets me every time I'm daydreaming and all of a sudden that thing's flashing I'm doing twenty eight.
The flash is red so you get to the right.
Well twenty eight twenty five. But no, I it's I think I don't know how many can go down and have coffee Saturday morning but I'll tell you what there's cars go through here at sixty five and I'm not bitching about the the traffic officer sector, he's very good, believe me I do. So.
I was just gonna ask, is it safe for you to remind you to slow down or?
No, it wasn't to slow down.
I'm gonna I'm gonna tell I'm gonna tell Mike thank you for his time and whatnot just in case he wants to move along and listen but Mike, thank you very much for your update and whatnot and we'll definitely uh look around and see what we can do with that dirt and stuff and we'll look forward to coming back in a couple of weeks and seeing where we're gonna be.
Oh, I'll be up there I think I'm due to fly into town on the night.
Okay.
So I'll be up to the night of the next meeting.
Oh, okay, great. That sounds fantastic, I'm like alright, well thank you very much sir.
So.
Okay, and on your note Rick, you know I'm on your on board with you, hundred percent.
I'll do some looking around, they might have some traffic safety grants, I know that we've signed off on a couple of them for like the street or stuff like that. So I'll see what grants are up through that avenue and see kind of what products they have.
I was gonna say, he's the man to talk to I would think.
Yeah, no, your officers are doing a good job, I just know they're not here on Saturday morning but and that's when I noticed it the more I'm not trying to blame the Canadians, I'm really not but I do believe I I'll guarantee you the first few people they get are gonna be locals.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, there's a blue Canadian car that flies through here about sixty miles an hour, I see him.
Yeah, I know, I bike my wingback, I wanna run out and jump my car and chase them down.
I would scream at him when the gas pumps.
Okay, so is that everything for the round table discussion, anything else?
Can you hear me Glenn?
Huh?
Go back to Glenn.
Oh yes, see it's how Glenn's here. That's alright, we welcome you.
Yes. You're kind of busy few days.
Glenn. I can do that.
Do I have to sit next to Rick?
Yes.
Yes. As long as you ain't got your handcuffs on.
Uh so you had two home calls for service, the first one was a harassment, two neighbors that don't get along. The reporting party is saying when they're going down the street, the other individual swerves at them, honks their horn when they go past the house and gives them the little pistol fingers all the time. So they were bothered by that, wanted to report it, they didn't want us to do anything about it, they just wanted it kind of on record so that if anything escalates down the road there's there's traffic. We no, no, your name wasn't mentioned this time.
No, he's pointing at me.
The other one was a suspicious circumstance and I believe it was up on top of the hill here actually, a residence vacant residence door.
Oh, I called that in, it's open again.
Yeah, so deputy went up there and checked, obviously people have been in there drinking their beer and having fun and whatever but apparently the owner said we don't really care, you know.
Everything's turned off, but yeah, the doors kicked open.
Yeah, they haven't been up there for years apparently and they're not really completely concerned about it, they just want to make sure no criminal activity was occurring.
He doesn't want to slaughter in there again.
Yeah, so the deputy tried to close the doors the best they could and and that was it, so. There are two calls for service. The only other thing was a reminder that on Tuesday morning we've got the coffee with the cop of the.
I will be there.
Is that every Tuesday?
No, it's the third Tuesday of every month from eight to nine thirty so.
Thank you Glenn.
It's a good time, we enjoy it.
Of course you love the doors.
So, the treasurer's report Kelly?
Payroll ninety three ten fifty four, expenses thirty three fifty seven thirteen, revenues twenty one thousand seven twenty four fifty nine.
Motion to accept the treasurer's report?
I'll make a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
A second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, council reports.
Oh, our seed swap's coming up on Saturday, April fifth. Um from ten to three, small animals are welcome, last year we had a couple goats and that's I wasn't here, I think I.
It was raining, it wasn't fun, we brought everything in here but we really want to be awesome.
I hope.
It was really amazing, yeah.
Yeah, I that's whatever was really great, um we're gonna have a couple baskets we're making up to raffle, tickets will be five dollars apiece. Um sounds like there's gonna be some starter seeds or plants and all sorts of seeds and all sorts of fun stuff.
Tell Jade I um paid the shipping.
We have a huge donation of um heirloom seeds coming in from.
West coast seeds.
West coast seeds.
I have to grab their logo.
Yes.
Tell me early, doesn't that mean that they are established or?
Yes, they're not messed with at all.
Yeah, it's like they're super cool, they're great, that's the best. Really, really cool, um we're gonna have hot dogs, Gracie's gonna do lemonade stand.
We're gonna do lemonade stand.
Yep, um raffles, gardening classes but we're still gotta get ahold of Elizabeth to.
Just yeah, her classes were awesome last year.
That's one of her, yeah, um yeah, hopefully hopefully all goes well, donations, all of the bunnies, all the proceeds are gonna go toward beautification. Um keeps our town all sorts of pretty, buys our flowers, our baskets and everything throughout the year. Um any questions, get ahold of any of us, meddling beautification. Super excited.
And when is that?
Uh Saturday the fifth of April, ten to three.
Oh yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, at ten to three.
Ten to three, yep, hopefully it'll be nice.
And that would be a little girl who's selling lemonade, so.
Yeah.
Are we gonna have hot dogs and all that again?
The hot dog truck, yep.
Great.
Awesome.
Okay, just hopefully it could be outside.
Yeah.
I hope so.
What do you have? Off fours. Nothing.
Nothing?
Just that.
No sports, no, okay.
Basketball's done.
Okay.
Uh. Softball's starting. Uh the youth sports for baseball softball is starting so twelve and under.
Okay.
High school uh baseball and softball started last week.
She's just super busy, now I'm gonna add to it.
She is super busy.
Did you call her game off tomorrow?
No.
I haven't heard, I hope not, 'cause I really want to watch it, their first home game is tomorrow, it starts at noon and I believe softball's is a double header. Baseball's only one game.
At the school? I thought there was a hardball game down there.
No, the high school is the hardball.
The high the high school and then.
Where's the softball?
Okay, yeah, yeah. Um I forgot to I think as of now, May first is the Spanish URB play?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
Oh, good.
There's gonna be a lot of.
I I am confirming it tomorrow.
Okay.
And then she will take dogs as well at this one, I'm confirming it, the date's confirmed, I'm confirming the time and the price.
And probably a size limit on the dogs, really.
And do you need volunteers to come down help give people a break?
Just one, so 'cause we have to make this room super hot.
And and quiet.
And quiet with dark um so when they're coming out of the anesthesia, we did lose one cat.
And I'm sure it's just Thursday, but that cat was sick when we got it.
It was.
Yeah.
No, this was last year, you weren't here with me last year, you were here with me the first year.
Well, we lost one last year too.
Yeah, it was it it was it was a pet and it didn't it didn't go with the anesthesia.
Anyway, whatever. Okay. I'm pretty sure this is the Thursday.
I'm gonna get a tickle.
So but yeah, we'll have a Spanish URB class, I'm just confirming the prices and um yeah, so you'll have a you'll probably have I'll I'll have a flyer tomorrow.
And Rick, do you have anything?
Well, the park was pretty good, uh we're gonna have to try to plan some kind of a I was gonna say fire, some kind of a grinding.
Oh.
There again, we'd have to look to the beautification committee to see if they could come up with enough money to rent, say the the.
Masturbator?
Yeah.
We did, we paid for it last year.
Yeah, I know you paid for it, I'm not. Yeah, I know you paid for it, I'm not, Brandon don't work there anymore and he don't think the guy has come up here on his own to do it, so. But I was thinking maybe we could get the, uh, portable chipper from down at Z and Z's, rent it for a Saturday and get two or four people down there.
We could wait for the chipper day to come.
Because we're doing it, Sonia's doing a chipper day.
We're gonna do a chipper day at the park.
Okay, that's what.
Mastication is better though, especially if we wanna do like the trails and stuff, 'cause it kills the root base of anything after it's masticated. But doesn't really piss how the mastication is?
You know, he might, I, I think he did.
For some reason I think that he does.
I think his goes on an excavator. And the other thing, of course, we're looking at, and I'm looking at is to try to figure out to get that hole filled up where it washed out, where the old drain used to be for it. And, uh, there's been several suggestions.
Did it wash this later?
You know, Mike, I don't think so, I, it, it don't look to me like it's got much worse. But it, you know, I, it, if there was some way, and I'm working on that on the site, but I'm trying to get meddling falls to see if they go along to rent us their big loader. I think we could fill that up in a couple hours with a loader, we gotta have something that hauls more than, you know, just a half.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
But if we could get that, and it's gonna, we got that big pile there, I mean, we could use all that dirt that we wanted to and gravel, it'd be really good to get it in here, but.
Some of that's going back on the bank, on the bank stabilization, isn't it?
Well, we'll see, still working on that, but that's, other than that, the park looks good, uh, you know.
When do the dogs get put in?
You know, I.
Usually May.
They're, they're kinda look, the, I think they're a little worried this year about high water hitting us. Because the kind of, I'm just saying this often, for me, the kind of spring we've had, it could turn off and get sixty-five, seventy next week. And if we get that, it's gonna come at us, and I, I asked the other day why they're drawing it down so far and they just said they're selling power, they got two units out, so they're only using four.
Wow, that is low.
And they, they, they pulled it down the other day, if they had another five feet, I think I could've got by there, side by side, you know, where they put the hole in.
Where the dock is, where it, where it go then?
Yeah. But anyway, that's, the park looks good and I, and I'll, I'll check on the docks, I'll ask, uh, McCarthy, but normally they don't get them until after April and, because they're, the high water runoff scares them. But them poles held up better than I thought they would. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Rick, is there any public?
You ever heard anything, Janet?
No, I don't. They covered it, I'm jury not to cough, I have a tickle, any public comment?
Do you guys actually got snow in your forecast tonight?
Yes, we got it today.
Oh, wow, so why not?
Apparently, it's trying to be.
All right, good.
Now, the city, as you said, can't get much bigger, we can't bring in industry and we don't want to bring in industry.
Correct.
But in this day and age, there's only one real way to attract attention and that's an online presence, actual social media. I know, I know, you, you mentioned Leavenworth, and Leavenworth went huge when they went to Bavarian Village, they became a theme. They succeeded because they were in a place that was just absolutely mind-blowingly beautiful. And the pictures of Leavenworth went around the world and people from all over the world said, I have got to go see that. North Bend tried it, North Bend was gorgeous, it worked for a couple of years, but it petered out because the rest of the world said, well, that's nice, didn't go. You know, if, if we had something like that, we could probably attract worldwide attention, we don't, which means that we have to present some form of an online, I don't know, mystique for lack of a better word. Something that makes people out there say, I need to see that.
Oh, we've got that, we got that great steakhouse in town.
That's good, Mike, that was good.
So, so where are you going with this?
We're gonna have a hard time doing anything till we get rid of that.
Well, I, I don't have anywhere to go, really, it's just, we, we can't do it the way it used to be done, 'cause the world's different now.
Yeah, well, if you come up with thoughts on this, please share it.
I, I wrote, I wrote a town theme song.
I can tell you.
You wrote a town theme song?
I, with my mar, with the marketing money, we have to report it, we could do a commercial for this town, that I have enough money for.
And have people spotlight in it, like have Dan in his theme song and our boat launch.
I would probably give the whole arden, but.
Yeah.
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 That's something we could bring up at our board.
And the, the whole arden is good, but when we're focusing on us here, we're kind of forgotten, nothing to take away from the others, but, yeah.
I would be happy to record this and send it to Polish and have her pass it around.
What?
His song.
Oh, okay.
We can put his song to the commercial.
I listened to it when he had it on, yeah. That's awesome, thank you, Janet.
I'd be happy to donate.
I was gonna say, he's gonna want some sort of cut, people, don't get excited.
Just keep the candy bowl full.
We can sit down on a chair and you'll.
There's a lot of marketing things here, I mean, you've got Gardener Caves, you got Boundless Jam, Box Candy Jam.
Oh, yeah.
We do, but you know what, I ran across from people from Kettle and Colville, cert, and even as far as Republic, when I do see them, oh, you're in meddling, isn't it Boundary and all the ca, everything, that's a meddling falls, right? No, it's between us, actually.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, yeah.
But we do kinda get overlooked, and one of my pet peeves is our sign is missing.
I was gonna ask about that.
And I want a metal sign like what's at the park, it's, it's stunning, it lasts forever.
That'd be great, like the park that says water.
Yes, it's absolutely stunning.
Yeah, that's a good one.
The most it's ever gonna do is get some patina on it, it's always gonna be there and look good.
I want some of like those, like, like moose or elk or something, the big cutouts, yeah, no, 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 the cutouts.
That's cut into it?
No. No, bigfoot?
The shadow. The shadow looking.
That would be amazing, that, I would love some, I know, I know they're expensive, but I would love some of those on the sides of our roads.
Well, that would be pretty with the metal and then the elk, and then it'd be, we could put, get some kind of solar lights to put behind it so it lights up at night.
Yeah, I just really think it's a loss that our sign is, is not there, it really is, so, I don't know, I've only been here eleven years, so what do I know?
Put the sign there and then put the radar sign right there.
No, you just keep that down on your end, on that end. Okay, if that's everything, anybody have anything else they'd like to input, no? I need a motion to adjourn.
What motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you all.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Oh, too bad I turned you off.
I was gonna say, I think he hung up on her.
I hung up on her.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Jakey.
Yeah.
Thank you.